All right, Cindy.
Okay, we're live.
I'm hoping it's not that.
She didn't even go to her dad's to say.
Did you?
Because.
Not taking.
Joel, are you ready? Tracy, are you ready? Tracy, are you ready? Got it? Angie, go. David, are you ready?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'd like to call order. Uh, the Republican Council of Accounts will be April ninth, twenty four is certainly six thirty five according to that call. Uh, please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrator and announce if you're using the recording device. Sandy, are you good?
You are.
Okay. Uh, public count will be limited by five minutes per person to facilitate others in business needs. Um, give them a moment of silence and then, uh, what to do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, the God, and the visible for everything justice for all.
Before we move to the vote call, uh, Vivian Inzbacker has requested, uh, telecommunications into the meeting. I'm looking for, uh, question on that. Joe group? Lou, second? Tracy? All payers say aye. All, all votes? Right, so move. Give me a second. All right, hey, and for future events, wait. Did you blow this number? Okay, all right, I'll give you go back. Hey, not wrong. All right, uh, Joel, when you vote call.
Vivian Adams Butler?
Here.
Tracy Nuss, here. Vicki Rice, here. Joel Fowler?
Here.
Tommy Thomas?
Here.
Seth Heitman?
Here.
Mayor Brown, here. Solicitor Walt Tilly?
Here.
Doctor David Fulton?
Here.
Simon, here.
Thank you. Uh, in essence, uh, we've had a rejected session tonight, uh, six to six thirty, uh, and the council chair will be here to discuss personnel pending litigation, uh, our soli. Uh, next, idle, uh, council vacancy.
Okay, I'm going to see the letter I'm gonna read. So, good evening, Republican Council. My name is Jerry Duncan. I have lived in this borough for many years. I'm also a business owner in the borough of guitars on George. I have served in several capacities in the borough in the past, including serving as mayor of the borough. I often watch the council meetings online and feel that I can contribute positively to the borough's goals. I have been assisting with musical bands and DJs for the borough recreation events and hope to continue helping with the rec made to provide low cost entertainment for our residents. I ask that you allow me to fill the vacancy on council and I look forward to working with everyone on council towards a better future. Thank you, Jerry Duncan. And Jerry, do you have anything you want to say? Tell us in the letter.
No, I think it's clear.
Okay.
Hey. Uh, Jerry Duncan? Anybody on council, any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Duncan?
I do have a comment. Not, not specifically for you, but, um, I know we had a vacancy for a long time now. Yeah, they, they, yeah, they haven't done anything about it. So apparently they haven't found anything.
There was nothing called. There was no vacancy committee that was had a.
Yeah, we can't.
So, so, well, well, okay. So, I've called, open calls for vacancies at every meeting. Um, the county was notified after the last election.
There are plenty of them, but there would be a plenty in January.
That's all.
The vacancy committee is supposed to be appointed in the end of the year.
The vacancy committee of all county?
It's county?
Yes, I thought.
It's at large.
And, and nobody has moved forward?
But there's supposed to be one member at large as well.
Okay. So nobody has moved forward long period? And Kelly has not gotten anything, of course. So it's still a vacancy. I've been announcing it at every meeting.
Right, but because of the fact that it being over the allotted time, legal time?
No.
There is legal time of.
Tracy, Tracy was not, Tracy was plural. Let's tell her. Hold on, hold on, no, no. Tracy was plural council in November of twenty two. That, that vacancy was open for a while. We had two vacancies.
And that should have been solid, and it's not.
And when I was going up to the email, I was told that I got the email to show. I was told that somebody went to the elections board and the elections board replied, well, I don't think elections board, they banned that. Cause the elections board has nothing to do with it. By the law of the third kind, which is the very law, it should already went to the common plead court, which we keep saying and insist and that. Go for it, ever. For some reason, people are not covering and not doing it the right way. While all rights, then he called, we shouldn't have this put on, matter of fact, you shouldn't have been. If we were following our.
And neither should have Tracy, man. They're on balance, too. Jerry, this is nothing against you.
I just.
I just want stuff.
I'm, I'm not taking it personally.
Okay, good. I just want stuff that's legal.
I'm, I'm just really shocked because I've never seen a vacancy be hugely filled because of that. Like, I've never heard that.
It's not. So you're saying we're not allowed to take an applicant?
You, you, you are, you're still allowed. If the court still assigns somebody who had a vacancy and somebody, somebody puts in for it.
But they haven't, you haven't gone to the court.
We did, we notified the elections office.
The elections office is not the court, come on, please.
Why is she yelling at me? Council hasn't filled the vacancy.
Why?
There's a vacancy. And I said the last meeting, if anybody would fill the vacancy.
What, what is, what is it?
I've been announcing it at every meeting.
I would love to see that. Be honest with you, Jerry, because we've got some knowledge.
If, you know, if it's gonna create more of a problem than it's gonna solve, then maybe it's not working.
No, that's not the case. It's just the fact that we need to do things the way that the law says. And that's what we have to follow. Because we're not some Choboken place that, you know.
Nothing against Choboken.
Yeah.
There may be a time factor involved, but when I sat on council before, which I was on council before, when we had a vacancy and somebody would apply, uh, the council basically, if they had questions, they asked their questions. And then they would vote on to accept or deny that person. But it seems like the issue here is there's been so much time go by that other factors now weigh in.
And I know, it's not that, I don't think that's the process, but I want to make sure that.
That, that will do the same. And you will advise and support? Okay.
So let me just pull up a broken here.
Yeah, I'm looking at the American legal. That's where I'm getting my information from.
Yep.
And that states in there specifically that, um, notice of the vacancy, something you read aloud in the next regular meeting, which we had done. Okay, and within ten days of that meeting shall be posted in conspicuously, conspicuous, oh, sorry, conspicuous places in the borough office, which was not done.
It's in the minutes, because we announced it.
But it's in the minutes, but it's not posted.
And it's posted in our agendas.
But it's not posted in the borough office. Okay? Publish? What? And then it says that. Vivian, give me a chance to talk through these things.
Walt's looking into it, Nancy's looking into it.
Yeah, some, give some minute here to figure this out, sure.
It says that the regular scheduled meeting held within thirty three days after the publication, set notes, time of council shall fill the vacancy by appointing from the candidates interviewed, that candidate who receives the majority of votes of the council members. If the borough council shall refuse, fail, or neglect, or unable to have for any reason whatsoever, fill the vacancy within thirty days after the vacancy happens, as provided in this section. Then the vacancy shall be filled within five additional days by the vacancy board. Such board should consist of two borough council members and one registered elector of the borough, who shall be appointed by the borough council at the council's first meeting each calendar year, or as soon as they're, soon thereafter, as practical. And who shall act as chairman of the vacancy board. The board shall appoint a registered elector of the borough to hold such office. The term therefore, or era, continues so long until the first Monday in January after the first municipal election, occurring more than sixty days after vacancy occurs, at which election an eligible person shall be elected to the office for the remainder of the term. If the vacancy is not filled by the vacancy board, within five days, the chairman shall, or in the case of the vacancy, in chairmanship. The remaining members of the vacancy board shall petition the court of common pleas to fill the vacancy.
Right.
Am I correct in that?
Yes, and, and what you have to do is you have to submit the name of someone.
Exactly.
Um, uh, so, but, but in, in the case of filling a vacancy, where there is agreement among the council, you can fill the vacancy. You've done that in fear. So, I mean, a, you know, a lot of you are, are in as.
We want to make sure that we're following the law.
Well. Okay, can I say something? From my knowledge and what I've been, that the actual Commonwealth Free Court, they throw it because they can throw it to anybody that wants. Probably what some people didn't want to do, but I'm just saying. Anyway, that is the way I would say, I would say that it is required. Now, if we have somebody in mind, hey, I'm sure we could recommend them or whatever, that's your profession to do it. And by now, if we go all reach, we are blunt. We are blunt, it's up to them, not up without. Oh, yeah, I agree with what he did. It's pretty quick to clear.
And I think, I think if we have a.
I'm sending a little quote before I go, that everybody email right now, take a light of passage, write it to an email.
Aren't you really?
Just ignore.
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think a few meetings back, wasn't Denny? Maybe? That's what I was under the understanding. I mean, I couldn't care less whether Tim or anybody else, believe me, I'd rather have someone.
Right, Denny and then council with large, that's the vacancy board, right.
Right.
Yeah, okay, right.
And. I can see why we cannot give a recommendation to the court of common pleas or common whatever.
Okay, so.
I give them a recommendation of Harry for the next, and then have them come back before the next meeting.
Okay, we, we have, we have. We have new boards, uh, but.
I'm sorry.
It has to be a board of two councilmen.
Two councilmen.
So, so what the board does, what the board does is solicits and, and goes out and invites people to join. Right. That hasn't happened. But as she said, the board. But, but people from the community can step up and volunteer. That's why I've been calling out at each meeting. I'm like, we have a seat, everybody here at the meeting, I say, anybody who'd like a seat, you know, and, and I call it, so. I understand, but what, what you read off of that says it has to be the board. I mean, Joel, you were, you were appointed that way. Nikki was appointed that way. I understand that. The board is the one who's supposed to submit that in the conference. The most of the.
No, the board, from what I read, the board was supposed to have done that prior. Uh, and then they could have came to meet and he's won it. You know, then it would have been discussed between the people of board of, and the, um, the committee, two councilmen, and the chairman.
Right.
And then that determination, he would bring that to you and say, you know, we have this gentleman, and you bring it to the council and say, we have this gentleman that's interested. And then, you know, and we looked through everything and we all pleased, you know. Good, you know, that would be a, a benefit.
And then you said some, uh, a certain amount of time, that person. From what I took, after a certain amount of time, the board is supposed to be.
After.
To the common pleas.
If, if they do not have, if the, if the council, the, you know, the board of.
Right.
Okay, if the board, the vacancy board is not get the, get the information.
What?
Or get, or make a decision prior, then after a certain amount of days, then goes to council to report a common pleas.
Which is where we're at.
Right, exactly.
And you don't even have it.
Yes. It's, it's, the vacancy board is Denny Brown and council at large.
Okay, well, at this point, if you're going to follow the statute, the vacancy board has no role now.
No, if there's a board of common pleas, it's just.
So, and it is the chair that petitions the court.
Right.
So, that would be said. Would, would direct the petition.
Direct the petition to them and you could give them a, a name of Jerry, don't you?
Yeah.
That, you know, that he is showing some.
But, but just so we're clear, is that now going to be?
That's how it has to be.
We're running a business here.
Well, okay.
We're running a business here.
Because that's not what was done in the past for.
And that doesn't, you're wrong for.
For both. You know, and my opinion is not mine, but it's.
Yeah, it's.
It, it's, Walt just said, it's not me. So if you want to follow that, you sort of can't. Um, but, uh, so I just want to know, if, you know, all that extra expense and everything, it's going to be associated with, with appointing Jerry vacancy now. So if that's what you want to do.
It's not going to be, if we can get somebody prior. And we have the people, had the, the meeting, like, had the, uh, vacancy board have a meeting. But there was never anything called on that. They, they weren't even told to have one.
No, uh, no, I'm just saying.
Dennis is not told, don't give me that.
So, so that's not my duty.
Okay, go ahead.
Don't yell at it. Vivian? Vivian, please talk normally and not yell. Thank you. They're hearing you.
I can hear you.
Walt just said that's not necessary. It's, it's not crystal clear. So let me just. Noted, okay. So, 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 so we've had vacancy, I've announced it at almost every single meeting. We got a letter from somebody, I put it on the agenda. That's my job. My job is not to petition the courts. My job is not to have any role with the vacancy board for the council. Okay, so she needs to stop pointing at me, it's not me. Okay, but I'm not involved in that process, Vivian.
I guess, I guess my, my question would be, wh- what do we think is reasonably to turn around the common pleas court assigning of somebody to be?
Probably would be, I, I'm, I'm hoping we could do a motion court and have it done and.
Okay, so it, it would be a reasonable turnaround.
Right, okay.
It's that process.
Yes.
And, and you, are you saying that, are you interpreting the law that we don't have to do this?
Right, if there is an agreement, you know, usually petition process is when you have two competing factions in the, uh, in the council and they can't agree. That's usually how this arises. Um, but if the council agrees, then, uh, appointing someone is usually accepted. But if you, if you want.
And that's within the law.
Yeah, it's been, I will say yes, because it's been the established practice of boroughs throughout, through accounting for, for all of them. And we followed that procedure.
And I, I.
But like the mayor says, if you have the statute, you want to follow the language of the statute, then you would do it the way the statute says, which is go with the petition process, which means that instead of having a group agreeing on who the person will be chairman or nominee. Then if anybody opposes it, they would then file an answer to the petition, opposing petition, which then would delay matters, you would have a hearing at that point. But if, if we go, if, if we, if, if the council decides that it would, that it would approve the petition, that would consent to the petition, then I can put that into petition and say, you know, the, the council consents to the petition's name, Jerry Duncan, that it's a vacancy. If you're appointing the vacancy, put that in, I would manage to, Vegas would sign it without me appearing. That would be my expectation. So, is the law or law? We can do it either way, it's me. Right, what I'm saying is that, um, it, it has been an accepted practice. No one has, has ever challenged the validity of appointing of a council member where it has been agreed upon by the council. Um, so, and, and, you know, several council members are appointed in that faction for that reason and.
I think everyone, I think everyone here, save for Vivian, has been.
Yeah, so not, and, and, and it's not just for the borough, it's other boroughs too, to do that. Because a lot of times you're just grateful to have someone that's really assertive.
Right.
But if you want to, uh, use the belt suspenders approach, then, uh, you can follow the mayor's, uh, reading of the statute and follow the precise statute for your language and file the petition. How would the appointment make that one? I, in my opinion, it is the council's choice to which procedure you would like to follow.
No, oh, to add to that, I mean, in my almost four years, we've had a full seven person council for two months, and those months were not consented. Uh, so, you know, I'm just food for thought.
Could I, could I make a brief comment?
What, what else? Give me four to hear.
Um, as I said, at my time spent on council, many years ago, a lot of people came and went. I don't know how many times you do the same thing over and over before you set a legal precedent. But if that's the case, we already had one.
I think that's what Walt said.
Because basically you've been doing it, as he said.
Right.
Um, if there's, if there's someone here that wants to legally challenge that, then I understand the procedure that you're talking about going through.
Right.
Um, and then my last comment is not directed at any one individual. I can clearly see why there isn't a line forming out the door to take the seat. I'll just leave it at that.
Uh, Jason, can you just tell, Jason is, uh, an attorney in your office and has worked as solicitor for several boroughs. He just found case law for him.
Yeah, there is, there is actually case law that, uh, states that this is in regard to Westland, and it's citation four twenty seven, PA three fifty eight.
PA means it's a supreme court case.
And, uh, basically it says, a borough council can appoint for vacancy after thirty days without going to the court of common pleas, uh, as long as there hasn't been a petition, petition filed at the court of common pleas already, as long as council agrees on truth to date, so. Yeah, if there hasn't been a petition filed, council can do it, and it's completely legal, that's the case law.
That's a supreme.
You said W P S L A N D. My second. W P S T O U N D.
Just trying to get these things that fixed up properly in.
Right, right, right. And that's what I'm saying, I think if that's done properly.
Oh, no, that's exactly what it means. Well, uh, to, to give you the, you know, it, it went to the PA Supreme Court and it said that this is legal. So if it was challenged, they would go, hey, did we have case law on this? And then they'd go, yes, we do, PA three twenty-eight, west side. And the, the court would deny, in my opinion, would deny an action against appointing a vacancy the way that it was presented to them.
And, and that case is from nineteen sixty-seven and it's never been transferred.
Yeah. So. Well, yeah, and that's, that's, the, the case law gives us that flexibility.
So, so now we're past the legal stuff. Um, I, I talked to Jerry last year about helping us out with some events. He helped us out, you know, got, got his medical treatment. Um, I went to him last month and I said, look, we have these activities, we're looking for bands or something, you know, do you have anybody that maybe can send us quotes or anything else like that? And, and, you know, he, he's watching the council, so he, he knows what's going on. He said, well, you know, I'd like to get involved with RAC, and I said offhandedly, you know, we got a position open. And, and, you know, decided, you know, and, and he decided, you know, he's going to submit a letter. So, you know, for me, okay, it's, it's awesome to have him because he's going to offer all of these different resources for us for our community events. And it's going to be a cost that we can afford. So whether or not he's going to counsel, I can still do that. But I was just excited that he expressed interest. Well, counsel, what are you going to do? So I.
Are, are you making a, a motion to deny filling the vacancy then?
I'm going to give a motion to take it to the council for a court of.
That's not what's in there.
Yeah, it has to be.
Somebody either has to say yes.
Yeah, it has to be a yay or a no.
Nominate Jerry or no, I don't want Jerry on the council.
Yeah, it has to.
That's not nominate Jerry.
It's not nominate Jerry.
You can always table it until everybody's completely happy.
Vivian nominated and Chris was second, Vivian second.
I said no, I said nominate.
But you nominate.
That's a motion. From Vivian personally. No, because she can't make a motion to send it to the court because that's not what the action is.
I just want to be clear as well.
Yeah, the, the action is, are we going to, are we going to accept his letter?
Okay, so I'm just trying to be clear on the good one.
So Vicki, Vicki said first.
And now second. Okay, so.
To, to appoint, just to be clear, yes, to appoint Jerry to the vacancy.
Yeah, okay. And assuming roll call.
Roll call, please.
Yeah, okay, set by him?
Yes.
You're well fired.
It's not an action item on the agenda.
Yeah, and, and her motion had to be either yes, or, or no, deny him. She made a motion to send it to the court of common pleas. Not, it's not an action actually, it means it's not an action item.
Are you still against?
Yeah, the, the action is to either accept his letter and nominate him or not. That's the action.
So I have said, you're welcome, you want to change your vote, you're either yes. Let me come back to you. Vivian? Vivian?
Are you there? So the, it is to approve and appoint Jerry to the vacancy, or to our vacant position. Yeah, so the, 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 the vote, the roll call vote we're taking is to appoint Jerry to the vacant council position.
Bobby Thomas?
Yes.
Tracy Nass?
Yes.
Vicki Rice?
Yes.
What about you, Joel? Do you know where it is?
Hold on, hold on, I'm just trying to take a little.
You don't need to guess yet. Okay, so we have five yeses and one no. So we pass.
Uh, congratulations, Mr. Duncan, you can take a seat on council now.
I think he just handed me a blonde fold and told me to stand up against.
So, so the mayor is swearing. Well, no, the case, Joel, the case law says that the, the, the board retains jurisdiction unless someone else files a petition. Someone else. Or any kid. That's what I'm saying. Unless somebody else. So if someone, if I have someone to file a petition. People said they did, and they shouldn't have filed it. If someone filed a petition at the court of common pleas, then the court of common pleas would got jurisdiction. But until that happens.
Yeah.
Council retains. This, this situation is not, what I'm saying is in the future, I think we'll go about what the law says. And I would say, hey, whoever will file that petition with the court of common pleas, that that's the process we need to take. Well, it wouldn't be, council wouldn't need to do that. If somebody wanted to nominate themselves, essentially. Uh, the citizen, resident, taxpayer, voter, said, oh, I want to be appointed, they could file that. But there wouldn't be a need for council to do it, because council retains that power unless somebody files, 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 or not, or not, files a motion to the court of common pleas. And the, the case law specifically says that, uh, court of common pleas, someone had exclusive jurisdiction. That, that after thirty days, it's only if someone files a, a motion at the court of common pleas. And if council retains that power to appoint, uh, again, unless someone involves the court of common. The court of common pleas has the power to step in after thirty days, but if essentially there is no interest. And no one's filing in any court of common pleas, council can do it themselves. So if one of them filed, it has to be the public, or is that to be the end? Just, just, just to clarify, Joel, the, the, the borough code says that the board can file a petition. The chair can file a petition, or any lecturer, that means any registered voter can file a petition with the court of common pleas to appoint someone to the vacancy. If it's any lecturer, usually it is the person filing to name themselves to fill the vacancy. Um, and then the board can file an answer either opposing or joining or just taking no position. Um, and sometimes there are two factions on council, uh, so the, um, one faction will file a petition, the other faction will file a fee petition. Uh, things like that. That's how that is done. Like until someone has filed a petition, the Supreme Court has said that the council retains jurisdiction, uh, and the authority to appoint a member or, or a person to fill, uh, the vacancy, provided that person qualifies. Right, so if we go past thirty days and I say they won't, you file a petition to the common pleas, so you have to do that, right, with yourself. Uh, I could, if you, if you said it and you wanted it done, I could represent. I don't know if I would have a conflict of interest in representing your personality on that, but you could get that attorney if not me, if I have a conflict. Uh, I'm not allowed to do it, I have to research that, but, uh, if you wanted to file a petition, yes, you could file a petition. If you wouldn't do, if you want council to file a petition, join you, then you could direct me as solicitor to file a petition on behalf of the, of the council. Yeah, I, I just want to know moving forward, if we give, whoever these move drops off, whatever, if we go past these thirty days, who was supposed to file a petition? When we don't, we have a vacancy, if we can't fill it, who does it? Well, um, like I said, the board, the chair, or the, um, or the lecturer can file a petition. So anybody can file a petition. I'll say, the whole problem has been finding someone who wants to serve. And then what happens is, we say, well, if we found someone who wants to serve, let's just appoint them, because we don't need to file a petition. Now, my marketing department would like you to file a petition. But I don't recommend it. I recommend that you follow the same procedure that you did following, which has now been verified by the nineteen sixty-seven thousand and three rule case. But I know that that's what we always, always done, so, so I don't think we need to overcomplicate it, is what I'm saying. You find, if, if the thirty days goes by well, and you find someone, for example, that is interested, like David did tonight. You can bring that name to the council and say, you know, I'd like to, you know, or that person can apply. You can make the motion to have that person appointed, and then that person will be appointed. Am I making sense, Kim? Is that?
Does that then have to go through the, um?
Vacancy Board?
Vacancy Board, thank you.
Um, it does not, uh, no, you don't have to follow that. What's, what the Supreme Court is saying is that, um, the council retains jurisdiction to name someone. Okay, so basically, here's what's, what the Supreme Court is saying in this case, which is, um, there are these procedures that council cannot act or will not act. Okay, but if council can't act, we're going to allow it to act. That's what the, that's what the court is saying, because, and the reasoning of the court is you are the elected official, you are the representative of the borough. You are in the best position, better than the courts, um, or better than a committee that includes a non-elected person. You are in the best position to make the determination of the head of the borough residents as to who will be, uh, appropriate to fill the vacancy.
Okay, now, another question, since that's been vacant for so long. When election comes up again, do they have to run?
Yes. They're, they're only, they're only elected through the end of next year.
Yeah.
Right, or, or appointed until the end of next year, and then, yeah, they, they get the remaining of a two-year term.
Oh, they do get.
Right.
They get the remaining of a two-year term.
It's too late for them to file to run for this question.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Those are. Yeah, because we just got, we just reorganized. So he would, he would stay on through for a while if he wanted, through the end of twenty-five. And then he'd have to run to be on council in the city.
Vivian Daxman, he needs to be reappointed.
Only if there's a vacancy, he would run for his own seat next year.
You catch that?
But if there's a vacancy beginning in twenty-six, you guys can still appoint. I understood Vivian's question to be a little bit different. I think that she might be asking, is this a calendar year appointment? And the answer is, no, it's a, it's to the end of that term. Yeah, so it's not a calendar year appointment, so it's not like an appointment to the solicitor or appointment to the manager.
I, I think, I, I think so. I, look, this, every person, I, I, the only person I can't speak for is you, Vivian. I don't know if you were appointed, um, some years ago. But everyone else up here has been appointed through this process, and I, I think it works for most of us. And, and that, and that's. Right, well, I guess the question.
Well, no, they stopped.
It's not being a libel of the borough. Yeah, no. Yeah, I think it still has to be somebody from the borough, right?
They stopped it. They threw me still appoint somebody who's qualified over somewhere, to be a resident.
Right, yeah, could be a resident. Yeah, Jason and Walt are saying it must be somebody qualified that we could appoint, so it has to be somebody that is a resident from the borough.
Right, because at one point we had someone who's not a resident for longer, that we could appoint.
Right, yes, correct. No, I, I agree, yeah. No, and, and, you know, it's like, you know, nothing against the court of common pleas, but we really want them appointing people for us. I don't know, I mean, I don't want to have to receive, but at the same time, I don't want a judge, I, I don't know, and you guys know him well, but, you know, appointing somebody that might not be, that might not hold our values.
Well, the judge, the judge will pick a random person.
Right.
The petition has to name a person.
Right.
So you, we have to go to the court with a name, uh, in the petition and ask if that person be appointed. Uh, that's how that will work, so you will always get someone to, to identify. The, the judge will never, out of the blue, you know, go through the, the voter list, for example, the voter administration doesn't pick someone that ran.
Doesn't drive around in an unmarked white van, door sliding open, just grabs overs walking down the street, you're on council now. Yeah. Uh, okay, good. All right, now do a swear, jury.
I need you to.
Come up there.
Thanks for your name, Derrill, it's D, D E R.
J.
Yeah.
D R R O L D. D U N C A N.
I don't understand, um, I, I was just trying to make sense, like. I think that would take a hard little. Okay, please raise your right hand. Uh, according to Act seventy-six of two thousand and eight, fifty-three P A C S, one, one four one. Whenever an elected official in the municipality is required to take, subscribe, or file an oath of office, the oath of affirmation shall be this form and this form. I, Jerry Duncan.
I, Jerry Duncan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support.
That I shall support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office of fidelity.
Of my office of fidelity.
This where she, um, up here? She said, which one are you looking at, the oath of office?
Yes.
Yes, the signature of official.
The signature of official.
Yes, yes. The other, the other one is his affidavit, that he gets in the borough. And that means he signs saying he's. And there again, it's the, that official.
Now that the paperwork is signed, probably.
Uh, I have to say, Jerry, Jerry, is it filled out, can I have a pass?
Yes, it's right.
Yeah, Jerry, we're going to put you down here for now. You may be somewhere different next month.
But that's fine.
So, so at some point, we'll need to get. So at some point, Jerry, we need to get you, the I nine is there, so we need to get you to you, so we'll work on that.
Alex, I want to verify your name.
Yeah, I'll do that.
I think I have left over.
Bring your, bring your.
Bring your name, please.
What happened, Jerry?
Well, let me know then, Jerry.
I will.
All right, okay. Good. Um, great, now would you want to fill a comment on agenda items only, please? Seeing done, uh, we can move on. Uh, the verbal minutes.
While they're looking at it, we're showing it when, when you've done with the draft, minutes, and, you know, we look there a little together, we're going to send them that way.
Oh.
From now on, so that they can review them.
So after I send them to you, okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I.
After you review them.
You do them, I'll, I'll look them over and make sure we got everything in it, and I'll send them back to them right away. Send them to walk to, I mean, because I keep a record.
Send them to walk to, uh, because I keep a record.
Any comments, questions, concerns, corrections? Things? No. I hear two all first off, work it to...
Two all first, okay.
Yeah.
And then to the second?
Uh, thank you.
All voters say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All votes? She, she do this, or choose or so.
Do, so you wanna...
Abstain.
Do you wanna abstain, or you wanna vote no? Okay. You think that, okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's fair.
And her reason is because she wasn't that many, so you probably will say.
Good. You went to the, uh, marriage.
I attended the March nineteen-two thousand twenty-four Northern York County Regional Commissioners meeting. Three officers were appointed to permanent police officer. They are Officer Garrett Anderson, no relation to...
Nope.
Officer Michael Budner, and Officer Drew Gordon. Nothing was done on the charter at this meeting, but will be addressed throughout the year. A resolution two dash twenty-four, uh, change orders authorization. This is for the acceptance of the agreement between Luke Carthorn and the Northern York County Regional Police Commission, one for the on-site owners representative, uh, who's passed by the commissioners. Groundbreaking ceremony for the new headquarters is scheduled for Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at ten a.m. The new headquarters is going to be located at One Regional Way, York, Pennsylvania. This is right across from three eight hundred of Suscana Trail North. The contract for completion of this new headquarters is scheduled for April twelfth of two thousand twenty-five. Some of the police activity in the borough of the month of February two thousand twenty-four were as follows. On the fourth, there was pursuit, North George Street at Parkway Boulevard. Unknown suspect led police on pursuit after refusal to stop for a traffic violation. Pursuit was terminated for excessive speeds. On the thirteenth, escaped one hundred block of North George Street, an eighteen-year-old was charged with delousing from the children's home of York. On the seventeenth, there was false identification, North George Street at East Seventh Avenue. A nineteen-year-old female was arrested for presenting false identification to the police during traffic stop. She was driving on a suspended license. For the month of February two thousand four, the borough had two hundred and four calls. That's sixty-seven more than the previous year. And the total number for this year is three hundred and ninety-seven calls, which is an increase of sixty-seven calls overall. And I, I was notified Wednesday, April third, that there was vehicle stolen on April second, uh, in the seven hundred block of North George Street. Female was returning from work when three males approached her and threatened her with a gun, threatening not to ramish you with a gun. The three males were walking up North George Street. The female had just parked her car when she was approached by three males. The police were notifying. The female was able to track the vehicle using an app that was shortly located, unoccupied, at Pine and Chestnut Street, York City. Vehicle was not damaged, it was towed, and it's being processed for prints. There was a video obtained from the neighborhood, and it is now in the hands of Detective Lebo and Lieutenant Anderson. Please make sure you're aware of your surroundings when entering or leaving your vehicle, as well as any time you're out and about. Also, make sure your vehicles are always locked. Again, I'm asking that if you're reporting, uh, yeah, again, I'm ending my report, so if you see something happen, contact me, please. Make this book is not the place to make a change. Um, also, I'd like to make sure that people keep an eye out, um, know your surroundings. Try to be as safe as you can, because things are just happening. And it's not just here in the borough, it's all over. Um, it's, as we were told, we're ghetto, I'm sorry, we're not ghetto. And I refuse to have our, our community call that.
Well, what is ghetto?
Ghetto is where, the area where the, uh, Mrs. Westhouse...
Goods?
Roads.
That's not the ghetto.
That's what we refer to.
That's not the ghetto.
Now, why don't you explain what ghetto is for us?
I see ghetto as a negative connotation that, um, is attached to a certain area, a certain background of people. Uh, ghetto is not what I see North Florida borough as at all.
I don't see it either. That's what I'm saying.
Just that terminology. Well, I'm kinda glad we're doing the, the E on morning. That's a good idea.
Uh, did it end? Yeah, um, with, with that robbery, uh, weather's nice again, so the, uh, fights are happening, pursuits are on the increase, and, uh, you know, we're getting into more scuffles and what have you. So, it's on the rise, it's warm again. Lock your stuff up, you know, much of the time, they always walk by the lock, park cars, you know, and, uh, keep cameras turned on and help each other out. Um, groundbreaking's coming up. Uh, the Budner kid, Mike Budner, that just got off probation, he had burglary at the storage unit here this month. Uh, he got in a pursuit with the, uh, vehicle, the newer, uh, storage sense.
Storey.
Yeah. Uh, he got in a pursuit with the vehicle, uh, from the scene, so he has a tag, has some suspects. And, uh, I'm gonna let the, I guess I'll call him kid. I'm gonna let the kid work on it before, see how far he can get before it gets turned over to the, uh, and stuff like that. That wraps it up.
Can I get one more thing? I'm sorry. I wanted to go and thank the Torreses for having the car showdown at, um, Duke Street. The fantastic job I've been trying to give them, talk with the twenty rec committee, because they did an awesome job. Um, they raised over five hundred dollars for Olivia's house, and it was very, very rough. Like, I, I can't say enough, I mean, it was very well organized. Um, I did talk to the person that started the Dodge club that they had. And he, we talked, and I said, you know, you guys can't go out here like racing them. And I said, I did tell the officer, you're gonna be loud, but that's okay, just don't worry. And they, they pulled out decently.
Okay, I'm sorry, how much money did you say?
Five hundred dollars. Five hundred dollars for Olivia.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to...
That's good. If, if I could also, I, I wanted to thank, uh, the police department. Um, I've had some interactions here this month with trolls. I've seen them down the park, um, they've been here through the borough. So, they've been very...
Oh, I, I guess, did, I, I did get, uh, Tom's schedule. Uh, I'll give him a call, see what he wants from the police department, to the public works, and hoping that goes.
Yeah, we just wanted to make sure you guys have the schedule, so you know we were doing it, just in case you get calls, then, then you know why.
And that they need a car moved, or...
Yeah.
Run the tag, knock on the door again to move it.
Yeah, so we just wanted to keep getting a little of that, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Chiefs?
Jerry, good evening. Um, like I said, we had non-calls of service, most of it was being medical related, so, uh, let's, let's deal with that. Um, we're moving forward with our software, so I'm hoping next month, I'll be able to start printing out like we used to do with you guys, even that information. So, uh, fingers crossed for safe. Um, so, so we're in progress there. Uh, we have a promotion ceremony next week on Thursday. Um, promote a couple of tenants, assistant chief and the captain. Uh, and we're gonna recognize two guys that just retired, so that's next Thursday. At City Council Chamber, we're gonna do that, so. Other than that, you guys are just talking away, got our new guys up at the academy, and, uh, it should be done at the end of next month, and we'll go from there. So, that's it.
I appreciate you, counsel. I don't see Dr. Olwara today, so we will be past DNA. Um, we'll move to staff reports. Our votes?
Thank you. Uh, the first item there, uh, I took off the last minute's quote for a generator per Dr. Olwara. We talked a couple of months ago about emergency preparations, uh, and this building needs a generator in case everything moves down. Uh, we did receive a quote the other day. We've been pushing to get it. Um, it came in over, but didn't matter. Or, or quote, no, I'm sorry. So, I have to take at least three phone calls. Um, and as of yesterday, I didn't have time to put that back. It, it took me two months to get this worked. Um, and then it's gonna take another nine months with the generator. So, you know, um, so I will keep working on that. I have asked Tom Marshall to help me out, but gave some quotes on that. He has some resources. Um, the second item is a quote for clearing the Mead Street property. Of course, uh, we bought the Mead Street property over here, uh, from semi. Uh, all the paperwork is done on that. Um, so I did meet with the, um, with an engineer. You guys have all threatened to do that previously. Um, we're gonna get some numbers on what that development is going to cost us. Uh, so I'll have those hard numbers. Once we have those numbers, we can look out for grants and whatever. I'm getting ahead of myself. First thing we gotta do is make sure it's clean, um, it wasn't octo. Previously, we had been working to get it cleaned up. At one point, he did start cleaning it up, and then York City told me to stop, because they said they own the land, so they stopped, and then that's when I got the wall. Then I said, look, what do you want from this land? So, uh, that's, that's where we're at now. So, uh, Brad Seymour, who did the lot over here, the other lot, when we had that cleaned up, um, that one was, uh, fifty-four hundred dollars, uh, that it cost us. Um, the other lots much larger. His original quote came in a little high, uh, for phone quotes. Uh, we took a look at it, he was able to scale it back a little bit. Um, there are some things that our crew can do, uh, over there, but with Charlie now being out, and, you know, the, the production in, in public works, we just don't have the manpower to do it right now. So, um, so Brad has given us a quote, ten thousand dollars, to do that now. What that's gonna entail is all the garbage, all the brush, all the little stuff. And he's not gonna chop any trees down, but the trees that are already down, he's gonna cut up and get out there. Um, and then all the cinder blocks, brick, things like that. The only thing he's not gonna move are the large barns. Um, you know, according to keep that corner, we could possibly use that for some landscaping. So, you know, we want to keep that open. But we don't want to take any trees down. Uh, the engineer said, don't, because it, we, we might not have to take some of them down. Uh, the fence is gonna stay up along the street. Yes, because if we take it down, we're gonna get permanent load back up. But if we leave it up, it's good. Then we just need repairs to it. But it also creates a barrier during construction, so, so it's gonna leave it up. So Brad said he could start as early as next week on that, um, and ten thousand flat, is just what he's asking. So that is under the amount that I need to get it out, under, under those. Um, and honestly, I saw what he did with the other property. It's, yeah, probably gonna take that. Because it's, it's a, it's, the, the lots probably two to three times larger than, than what we cleaned up over here.
Is that, uh, capital expense?
Yeah, that will come out of capital for, um, for land development.
Yep.
To this project. And we, uh, we're gonna start, I'm gonna start the file, but I'm gonna keep track of all the costs that we have incurred for that.
Can I ask a question about the labor? If you expect a smaller piece of land, if you talk to Dr. Olwara about a lot of problems?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Can we do that after?
No, um, that, that is still owned by the city, as far as I know. There, there is a parcel on the other side towards the, um, towards the park.
Oh, good.
But, but this contractor did clean the city property with that launch. Previous, yeah.
You know, with Brad Roberts?
Brad and Seymour. Is that, is that...
He, he works for a lot of different municipalities. If, um, so my current unfortunately used to be in that system previously. Then, then I told Tom to get me somebody, he brought Brad's name. I'm like, oh, yeah, I know that. Well, not nobody, but, but I know him. Uh, and he came over, did a good job for us here, so, uh, I offered for him to go split first.
Did last thing, Seymour?
Uh, yeah.
City?
When is that property gonna be used for?
Oh, it works.
So what are you gonna do with the public works at seven thirty?
Well, I'll come up with a... No, I just need a motion and a second for that.
Any, uh, motions from council? Rachel?
Yeah, sir.
Rachel. We have a second. The bid, yeah.
The, the quote, it's not, yeah, it's just a quote.
Yeah, it's a...
So you're accepting the quote and authorizing it?
One second. Second, am I done? All voters say aye?
Aye.
All votes?
Do we need to pay love?
No, that's...
Uh-huh.
It appears that the motion has passed me, I didn't hear any opposition.
Okay.
Vivian, did, did you vote?
I thought that I...
Okay, all right.
So everybody said yes?
As far as I know, this is the end.
All right, um, the other updates I have, um, first off, I, I had a little time before the meeting, I stopped down with the park and chatted with some of the parents and some of the kids that were paying on the basketball court. Uh, you know, just asking them, what do you think about the park? You know, how do you like it? Have you run into any problems? Is there anything we can address? Are there any suggestions for future development? You know, and then I told them some of the plans that we have for cameras, fixing up the pavilion, fixing up the rec building. Um, some of the suggestions I got, um, were, were to have the bathrooms open. Of course, with Mandy out, you know, that's, that's kind of an issue. We are building, hiring, uh, some park help. So, um, we, we do actually have somebody that may be interested, so I'll be talking to them this next month. Uh, we do have three positions for that, so, um, we do already have that in the budget. Uh, but in the interim, uh, Tom Marshall is looking into, uh, getting some water locks, so that, you know, we can set it, say like nine in the morning, whoop, they unlock. And then eight at night, whoop, they lock. So, you know, this way, we don't have to have somebody there all the time.
Yeah.
And then they go.
Um, that's a really good idea.
The water fountain down there, one kid said water, he, he said, we need a water fountain. I said, what about one go ahead? Said, it doesn't work. I said, well, it's either turned off from the winter, and nobody turn it back on, or, or we need fixed, so, uh, we'll be getting public works on that. I told him they'll have water. Um, they, they mentioned the nets, and these are some serious ballers. Um, you know, and I say that with respect, because I can't shoot. But, um, but some of these kids are like, you know, Central High School won the state, and, you know, this is, this is our area, and we take pride in it. We don't want people messing up. So, you know, all the kids that were there were on board. But they would likely fence around the basketball court. They said, what's happening is the, the balls, you know, when they get away or go off the court, or they're going downhill, or whatever. Uh, and they also thought that if that was open and locked at certain times of the day, that that would prevent... And they also thought that if that was open and locked at certain times of the day, that that would prevent people from messing up. The kids I talked to, they're about twenty old down here, some were a little older, some were younger, they don't want messed up. They said it's a great park, it's way better than it used to be and they wanted to keep it nice. So I told them we'd be looking at some cameras and whatever, we'll look into the fence and see what we need for that. One kid went in swimming pool, I said, absolutely not. I said, you're gonna have to hope it rains a little more, Phil's like, Phil's like basin, that's gonna be your pool. Yeah, we're very close to the door. But, but the parents I talked to and everything at the park playground, all very nice. You know, they enjoyed themselves, I only heard a couple of explicatives from the kids, all, you know, it wasn't egregious, but, you know, just kids being kids. And they were all being respectful of each other, so, you know, proud of that. We talked about the Mead Street property, the monthly spot audits, we talked about that. So we're gonna continue doing that to make sure we catch things before the end of the year. The parking rack, we're still working on the camera quote for the upgraded camera system. Now, problems coming in is that some of the things we need just aren't made yet. Our needs are ahead of the technology right now for, for the distances that we're looking at. So in the interim, they're gonna come out and put a couple different cameras on the same system that we have. So that it has better resolution, but it's not, it's still not gonna be exactly what we need, it's not gonna be night vision or anything like that. But it'll be better, they're gonna lend those to us until we get a new system. It's basically older cameras that they have laying around and they, you know, they wanna help us out. We talked about the fence, the auto locks in the bathroom, and plants for the one-twenty-fifth. So, you know, like I said, you know, Wendy's been a little hard going right now, and we can all understand that. So I've been a little more active, that's why I reached out to Jerry to talk about, you know, maybe getting some entertainment for that. There are four events that we're looking for, our black cultural event that we're looking to have, our Latino cultural event that we're gonna have, and then I think fourth of July is the other one, that we're looking at having in our team. So, so he's gonna look into that for us. As far as the diversity inclusion of belonging, you all have in your packets this paper, says diversity committee at the top. I told you the last meeting, we have a step-by-step process to get this set up, this is the next step. What I did was I took some examples of comments and statements from other companies. This doesn't mean this is only where you can come up with information. And what I would like you to do is look this over, you know, between now and the next meeting, you'll have to wait till the next meeting, send it back to me. If you have other examples, send them to me. Basically, what I wanna do is I wanna find out what words you're looking to have included in our statement. What, what, what are we gonna focus on and how are we gonna say that? You're gonna give me keywords and then I'm going to come up with some statements for you to review. So that would be mission and vision statements. And like I said, it doesn't have to be from this, but if, if you see something on here you like, highlight it or just send me an email, just, just me, not everyone. Just send me an email and say, Dave, the diversity committee, this is what I think, you know, these are the words I think we should focus. Okay? And we're not just talking about race, we're talking about religion, we're talking about, you know, personal, you know, decisions, gender, everything else. So we're not just talking about, hey, you know, one word, we're talking about everything. So please give it some thought. Please send it back, because mission statement, division statements are very important for how we set everything up ready for. And personnel, we are interviewing some candidates for Public Works. We will probably hire flyer to the next meeting, so that will be one for ratification at the next meeting. We have some very good candidates, very good candidates. I'm very excited to sit in and see what they have to offer. And with Tom sitting in on the interviews as well, I mean, the man continues to amaze me.
Yeah.
He is just, every week he comes up with something new and it's, it's exactly what we need.
But I mean, he's come up, giving up a lot of ideas to prove us and he's been his third week with us.
Yeah, fourth week now, yep. Beginning of its fourth week.
Yeah. Right.
And yeah, he's just, he's amazing, I can't say enough about it. He's got some ideas for revenue generation and everything. So I'm, I'm glad to be happy. Sanitation, streets are much cleaner, Tom Arnold, a couple of weeks ago, reached out to Penways, we were having trouble with large item pickups. We tend to picking up everything that was out there. So Tom called, we really didn't get much of a response. So the next time I was in, I had a call for the speaker, I expressed my concerns. That week, Public Works went out and followed the trash company, saw what was happening, I relayed that back, we told them, here we are again. If I need to start finding them, I'll start finding them. They said, nope, that's not necessary, and boom, straightened it up. So hopefully you see the difference between last week and this, and we'll continue to stay up there. And then the street sweeping, we got the street sweeper, we've got Ron in, ready to go. They are doing, they put a log out as Lieutenant Danglish had mentioned, so we, you know, we've got everybody involved in that so that everybody knows what's gonna happen. We're gonna post it ahead of time, and the streets will, we're gonna give every opportunity for people to move their stuff. We don't wanna call the police, we don't wanna take people, we don't wanna happen to them, but we need to get our streets done. So we're gonna work with people, we're knocking doors, you know, if we have to first, get cars moved, but, you know. Hopefully we did cooperate. Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're gonna.
I had an update today.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, they said they're going to use the signs.
Yep.
The sign posts, they're gonna put them there, and they're also gonna take a slip of paper and lay on the windshield. That's what they, that's what they told me today, that's sort of an update.
Okay, yeah.
I, I think it'll change, but.
Yep.
That's what they told me today.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, they were gonna use terms, maybe some garbage cans, look them over and put signs on, but yeah, posting the cards that they had.
Yeah, like the signs that have posts and stuff on them.
Yeah.
There, and then they said they're sticking underneath the butcher workers on the park.
Yeah, well, the, I know the signs we put out have to be a certain height and thickness.
Okay.
Another level like that.
But that's what we told them today.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And, and of course, Tom's started doing daily logs for me, so basically I know each person is doing each shit. So, you know, and that comes in with the time card. So if I get that and I see, you know, oh, this guy, he worked on this all day, or hey, he did five bitter trees today. Now we know it's getting dressed a little bit better. We were doing that verbally, but now there's an actual report. While we're talking about that, so maybe, maybe we should post that schedule, that street sweeping.
Once they get it finalized.
Yeah.
I said we could post it on the website too.
Yeah.
Right now what they're doing, if you've seen the street sweepper, is they're finding, trying to see how long it takes to do their. So.
Yeah, they've done some test runs.
Yes, yeah, they've done some testing, yeah. And once they get the schedule down, then I told them if they see that I get it, I'll, I'll post it on the guys.
And then we'll make sure to update everybody in this department so that they, everybody has this.
We should get a certain amount of days with that.
I'm sorry.
Do you like a certain amount of days per week?
Yeah, we're gonna do it continuously, it, it's gonna be a regular part of the week, so yes, once they have that schedule finalized, yes, it'll be, it'll be out at least somewhere every week.
With that being, which street do you think is the street or you intend to go and sweep it?
So we are not, but Tom Marshall has a program that he's looking into for us where we could possibly do that, or we could possibly even snowplow. And we would get paid from the state to do that.
It's called the agility.
It's called, yeah, the agility, yes. Yep. So, yeah, he's, I mean, he's just.
Because that's, that's our main, you know, getting out, and that's the first you can see.
People come up to me all the time, I work around, like, what are you gonna do with your street?
Yeah.
Which I could.
As soon, as soon as they get gone and they pave that. Then we're gonna start looking at our street. That's, that's when we're gonna get banners and trying to differentiate ourselves. I, I did, I ordered some banners over in Hallettstown. We'll just come in, see how they look and everything, I'm gonna look over there and if they work out well, then we'll, we'll compact that. Moscow. You know, it, it, the company's called Moscow, it was, it was funny, because, you know, they're, they're coastal, so, you know, I could go through them. They, I mean, I almost spent a thousand dollars. But then like a week later, a lady came in my office over there. And she started talking to me, and I'm like, oh yeah, I'm, you know, I'm Dave, I'm over talking to you about banners, she said, no. So we got to talk and, and so, yeah, she, she's helped with graphics and everything else. They're a really good, good company to work with. So, yeah, that's, that's everything I do, updates, so thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, let's talk about banner. It just like, you know, like the street banners, you know, the welcome to North York, you know, stuff like that. Some, some places have like, you know, their veterans, you know, I, I thought that maybe a nice tie-in with their DEI would be maybe to get with Sam Dorm and get some of the, you know, famous folks that are over at the Lebanon Cemetery. We got Bishop over there, a couple of generals, kind of thing.
They just tried a civil war trail sign put up for that, for that cemetery, but there's, there's gotta be more than enough while we get it.
Oh, there's, there's revolutionary war.
Right.
Folks in there together, and, and they were just recognized recently by the Fatale Guard. So hopefully we'll get this. You know, it's just a banner, just a street banner.
Like the ones that were up in Christmas time, up further along the street, that would, that would be something. Is it like the ones?
Yeah, just the decorative banners.
Is it the ones like printed on and something?
Yeah. There's all kinds of stuff, I can feel, I got this in my folder.
Yeah, okay, fine.
It'd be seasonal.
Yeah.
It'd be different, they have, they have banners.
Right.
Yeah, Tracy just. Yeah, Tracy just said, you know, that'd be a great place to put, you know, hundred and twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Kind of thing.
Yep.
Yeah, so we'll look into that, um, once they're gone, we'll come up with some ideas, get some ideas from council, and then get some order. See, see how they look, if they look nice, we'll order more.
I agree, and that would a long way to help differentiate us from our neighbors.
And that, and that, and that's the point.
And I will say, I haven't mentioned three yet, but Manchester Township just put up new, like, welcome to Manchester Township signs. And I was like, I don't think we have those on, uh, in North York five thirty, we have them, we have one down by second, there are a couple of people with us. So maybe we could get a sign there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so maybe another, another science is going to.
Perimeter required.
Yeah.
Dave, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any type of, I can't think of the exact time before, but panic system, someone's inside or it's locked.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure that somebody can't lock themselves in, yeah. Yeah, so it would lock on the outside. So somebody couldn't get in, but yeah, they could still get out. Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're, because we didn't think about that. Yeah, we thought, you know, yeah, what if, what if a kid goes in and then the time goes and it locks. Yeah. Yeah, they would, they would do anything, they just couldn't go back. No, it's a good question, because, because we did consider that.
Appreciate it. Alright, Mr. Chili.
First of all.
You want me to read the letter, so you know, just tell me what you want me to do.
Oh, alright. First of all, I wanna thank the council, as you know, we all get an agenda prior to the meeting and supposed to do so forth, and try to be prepared on the issues at that. And so I appreciate you allowing me to kind of work through the process of the questions you had tonight about building the vacancy. Having done it for seven years one way and then suddenly having new issues raised, so, so it took me a little bit to get my footing, so thank you for your patience. On a couple of matters, we did handle the purchase, closing on the purchase of the property that's going to be used for Public Works buildings, that went very smoothly. We have the sale of four seventeen North Street as a fire damage property that we have a lease against, and that's scheduled for Thursday. So you should be getting your check from the cell there, so that should help you with that. And then tonight, we have the ordinance, last month, we passed the ordinance to, I'll call it decriminalize, for lack of a better term, marijuana and paraphernalia related to it. The mayor has vetoed that, I think that her letter is read, and then you have other letters on that subject.
I just have two.
Okay, so we need to have the mayor's letter read and then the other two letters read. So we'll start with that. And then what happens is that the council will then vote on whether to override the veto. How do you know if you override the veto? It takes a majority vote plus one. We now have seven, so that means the majority is four, plus one is five, so it'll take five further votes. If the mayor's veto is overridden by five votes tonight, then the ordinance takes effect as of tonight, not as of the date it was originally considered, okay? If the mayor's veto is not proven, then it is, oh, the council has denied the ordinance in the first place, it takes no, no effect at all. So that's how that process will work, okay?
Do you want me to read all of it, or you want her to read hers?
Do you want the mayor to read her? That's the mayor's prerogative, would you like to read her?
She can read it.
Okay, there you go.
Okay. So, Honorable North York Borough Council, regarding the veto of recreational marijuana moratorium, members of North York Borough Council, in accordance with PHIOP in section, I O P A, section three-three-oh-one-point-three enactment, approval and veto, I hereby veto ordinance number twenty-two-four-oh-three of North York Borough for assessment of summary offenses for possession of summary offenses for the small amounts of marijuana or associated drug paraphernalia. I hereby veto the attached ordinance, this ordinance would enact a moratorium on the approval of any recreational cannabis usage and/or possession of small amount of marijuana and/or drug paraphernalia, addressing legalizing recreational marijuana or associated drug paraphernalia and setting penalties for violations under certain violations of thirty grams or less of marijuana. In the simplest of terms, this ordinance allows the use of possession already prohibited by the state offensive. This has not been taken lightly by me, as there are many factors to consider when approving this ordinance. This, in my opinion, is a gateway drug, tiny amounts can lead to larger amounts and used as a stepping stone for more illicit drugs. There is marijuana laced with fentanyl and other drugs that are illegal when not purchased legally. I was contacted about my thoughts on medical cannabis, medical cannabis is in a pure form and not mixed with other illegal drugs. Also, the person is under physician's care and evaluated regularly. For these reasons, I am vetoing and refuse to sign this ordinance. So you should have a copy of that letter and you should have the ordinance in your package. On March thirteenth, I got this, it's sort of short and sweet, it says, David Evans, is his name. I am an owner of Rest Haven Nursing Home on South George Street, we employ many people in York County. I'm opposing to decriminalize marijuana and inform, I will email you a number of documents, please do not do this as a lower the quality of life for York. And then he sent me this, the rest of it was, he says again, I'm the, I'm one of the owners of Rest Haven Nursing Home on South George Street. this, the rest of it was, he says again, I'm the, uh, one of the owners of Rest Haven Nursing Home on South Fourth Street. We employ many people in York County. Please do not encourage legalization, criminalization of marijuana. It will not help your town. And then it says, attach this information to help decide to reverse your decision. I don't see any stuff here that has disclaimer of liability, privacy. I don't see anything that was attached. So I, other than his writing, that's all I have. And then the next person is named Alex Cuffnagle. And he said, I urge Mayor Bronk to reconsider her veto of the Marijuana Decriminalization Bill. Jailing individuals who possess marijuana is a burden on the system and can ruin their lives and those around them. To be in favor of criminalizing this relatively harmless drug is antithetical. No one has ever overdosed on marijuana. Alcohol, alcohol is much more harmful and yet is legal to possess. A survey conducted in twenty nineteen surveyed four hundred York County revealed that fifty-seven percent of residents favored decriminalization. Please represent your constituents, Mayor Bronk. Be in support of letting people live their lives freely. And if you do veto, at least give a reason why, so that may be demonstrated how unfounded the reasoning is. Now, that was before you wrote your letter. And then, I have an email here, but I don't know, is that something you gave me? The Earth's from the York Dispatch? Did you want that?
I have, I can just say on that, the, the relevance of the York Dispatch article is this. I contacted the district attorney's office to see if I could get clarification on what the district attorney is saying about the decriminalization, um, ordinance. And the district attorney spokesman Kyle King responded to my email. And he said, I will say the same thing to the borough council that I said in the York Dispatch article. So, I have now the York Dispatch article. And the relevant part says, um, and this is, uh, this is written by the, um, the reporter. So let me, you can see that, okay? It says, state laws supersede local ordinances and the York County District Attorney says to follow the state guidelines. Anderson being Lieutenant Anderson said. But there is no written policy on that, according to the DA's office spokesperson Kyle King. It would be up to each jurisdiction as to how they would treat those, he said. So that's what Kyle King said about that. And that's what he said in his email. He would tell you if you were here in prison or if you were a former veteran. So that is the information that I got from the district attorney's office. So now you have the letters, you have the mayor, uh, the, the one, um, email, uh, asked Mayor Bronk to detail her reasons. She did that in her letter, uh, uh, in absolute accordance with the section that she signed out of the North York Borough letter. So now the matter comes before, uh, the borough council for consideration.
Go back there. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna be clear, since I wasn't here for the last part of it. And I believe maybe it was Joel last week, that, or last month, when we were watching, that brought up the question to Lieutenant Anderson. The state supersedes what we do here in the borough.
Yeah, Bill?
Well, let me, let me just period for a second. But what he just read is the attorney general.
No, the district attorney.
The district attorney, I'm sorry.
Maybe the future attorney general, but.
He's the attorney for right now.
So the district attorney says that what we do here is autonomous to itself. So which is?
Bill, that's not his decision.
He can tell you that. And, and, and he's gonna tell you up, down, sideways, and he's not gonna take a position like that, because it'll be used every, everywhere against him in every court.
Uh, with criminal prosecution, you're off the rest of his life.
I, I guess.
That's back to the solicitor.
Okay, my question is, then I'll, I'll direct this to you, sir. My question is, if the ordinance is passed, but has no validity in law, and the state statutes that we have already supersede what we're about to vote on, then it's a moot point. What's the point of even voting on?
Because the district attorney has said that it is up to each jurisdiction. So what the district attorney is saying is that they are giving consideration and permitting the law enforcement authorities in that jurisdiction to give consideration to these ordinance.
So if he finds somebody that, you know, seventeen or eighteen year old kid that's got a joint in the car, his immediate response would be what the state statute says, but then he could take into consideration, because he's in North York, North York has said, this is how we view it.
Right.
And then he can make his determination based on that.
Yeah.
So he's not obligated to follow what we say, but he can use it as counsel.
As he indicated correctly, it is a tool available to the police that they can use.
Okay.
And it is their discretion and the district attorney's discretion, um, as to, uh, the appropriate circumstances in which that tool is used.
So would it be fair to say that this ordinance, should it be passed, actually gives the police more latitude than they currently have now?
Yes, that would be a correct statement.
So, so the article went on to state that, um, York City, last year, they had the same thing. Um, and they actually used it, uh, like a hundred and fifty some times last year. So instead of filing charges, they just gave a ticket.
The quote is, York City passed a similar ordinance in twenty seventeen. Under that, first possession offenses are a hundred dollar fine, second offenses bring a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, and third offenses trigger a five hundred dollar fine. Over the last three years, the city's issued one hundred and fifty-five suitations annually for a simple marijuana use or possession. So that is an example where a police department is exercising its discretion and it is being accepted by the district attorney's office.
Now, 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 I will say this, though, I'm sure every situation wasn't that. I'm sure we didn't get a ticket in every situation, which are the other situations that they use in full state law.
There, there anything that shows them giving tickets or this was passed? No, they would not, not, they would not have been able to do that before that.
But, but you're saying?
Just, uh, I'm just asking, are you able to get some type of ticket now if you guys see that bit?
Like, could we give them a disorderly conduct for citation? And that, that goes back to last month, that before I was a cop, I know that that happened. You didn't, you know, you saw a marijuana pipe, you don't think it's been used in three, four months, and rather than arrest the kid, they gave him a disorderly conduct ticket. And it went, and this is ninety-four, ninety-five. I've been a cop since late ninety-five, but didn't arrest anybody probably from nineteen ninety-six. Uh, that we were told, don't do that. That you have to arrest them for the appropriate crime. And that is drug paraphernalia or a small amount of marijuana.
Possessing marijuana in Pennsylvania is a misdemeanor charge that comes with a fine and five hundred dollars and up to thirty days in jail.
I, I think, I think the simple possession is misdemeanor, ungraded misdemeanor with first offense, a hundred dollar fine.
Uh, it's up to five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So it's, it's supposed to be a hundred dollar fine, but it's up to five. So on first offense, certainly, it's a five dollar fine.
Certainly. Yeah. You, 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 you have to fingerprint them, photograph them, it has to go to the court of common police, and they either have to pay, go in and pay their fine, or actually take it to a ground we found not guilty.
The big difference is that, um, it's a misdemeanor, which means it's a record offense. It was, you know, summary offenses aren't on your record, so, you know, when you unlock your job or, you know, things like that, it doesn't show up. So that's one of the advantages of the, uh, summary offense, if you choose to pass this ordinance. It would not be a record, would not stay on the record and show up in, uh, you know, what, a job interview situation or something like that. I'm just gonna be honest with you.
No.
Just honestly, working with Brooklyn City for so long, I think it's a little bit of apple and oranges, because the entire police department is funded in there. Where here, it's not that way. So they kind of listen to what it says.
Can I take off, please?
You know, I'll put, I'll put.
It's a very bad loss. So if it gets passed, you can, I'm not saying that it does, I'm not, you know, communitizing that, but here it's not the same way. So they are told, hey, this is what's going on, if we look like this, it's gonna be done. Maybe give them a little industry, I can see it being doing that more in the city where they all answer to. You know, obviously, they're trying to commit, but he is not being trying to commit in the city, because the entire police department. I can't take the change of command issues, I don't.
Nothing against, but it's, it's just a totally.
I, I, I see what you're saying. The, the, the mayor appoints the chief.
Right.
Kind of.
So, I'm calling, I think I wanted to do, I think I wanted to do, I'm not sure, but, um, I think the mayor, the city actually made a comment that once they pass that, they have a lot, they're gonna be a lot more relaxed.
Right.
Just, just so I'm clear on what you said. They, uh, you basically, if I heard what you said directly, I'm paraphrasing. You basically changed the, what you charged them with. In other words, if you were gonna, you saw the pipe, you decided, you know, I'm gonna cut a little right here. You didn't charge them with paraphernalia, you charged them with disorderly conduct.
That, that was before I was a cop. I know that happened.
Yeah, I, I don't mean specifically, but that's the example that you just gave, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, at one point, and it went to a count, somebody appealed it and said, I wasn't disorderly, I only, I only had a marijuana pipe. So they, they appealed them being found guilty at the DJ, and the county judge said, well, yeah, it's not guilty. You have to charge them for the appropriate crime.
Okay, alright, that's what I thought.
So our policy went back, okay, it does supersede, we try to get latitude. Uh, we'll, we'll charge them for the appropriate safe crime.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Tracy, Tracy.
Um, when you could read now, people, like a hundred and fifty people, they, they gave out fines for, or the.
Hundred and twenty-five people, yes.
But that doesn't say that there were, maybe there were, did they charge other, were there other people that they charged with the Pennsylvania? They're not telling you that.
Right, I'm sure that there were people that were charged under the Pennsylvania statute, but that was not part of their.
There was, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. But, but yes, I mean, it stands to reason that, that there would be people that were charged for possession under the state law. I would, I would, I can virtually guarantee that that's the case.
Usu- usually if there's, if there's another charge, like if there's another crime, then they'll, they'll take the more stringent and, and send it all to court, so.
Okay, I'm curious. With this ordinance that you're planning on passing, they're arrested, given a citation, whatever, not only do they pay a fine with the police, they also pay a fine in the borough?
No.
Okay.
The, oh, yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be one summary ticket.
Okay.
So, yeah, they can't go to Jeopardy and say, hey, the borough says you pay this, and the state says you pay this, yeah.
Can I have some clarification?
Sure.
My theory may have, theory, but I, I want to understand the law, because I find a character of substance, what we're trying to do, or what, what some people are trying to do, let me say it that way. Um, with state law, does it not, the state law and federal law supersede our law?
Technically, yes, but what they had said was, the, the district attorney's, uh, position is that they are going to, they don't have an official policy on that, that they would defer to the locality rule. Um, so, you know, you know, Joe was saying, the mayor appoints a chief in the city, and they're directly controlled by the city. You know, this council decides what laws that our regional police should, uh, enforce, so, you know.
Right, but we can't make them enforce it.
That, that would be our, that would be our goal, so.
Right, because if we can't make them enforce it, correct?
It's, it's another tool for them. They could use either one, but it's, it's at their discretion and it's written that way.
Right.
It's at their discretion how they enforce.
But again, the state and the federal does different. That, that's all I want to clarify.
Sure.
Right.
Alright, thank you all.
And, and this area is actually very complex. Um, and, and I will give as an example, um, of the medical marijuana, so that we're having the same type of, of issue between the state and the federal government. Because the federal government, um, still has totally outlawed, um, marijuana or any of this. But yet the state allows it for medical purposes, which then creates complexities when someone is applying for a, a CDL, a commercial driver's license, where that has to be federal requirements and so forth. So, you know, this, this type of issue drew by, you know, the, the state or the municipalities. Several levels, uh, disarray, but, and, and of course, it exists in other municipalities as well, like York City or New York. So, um, you know, this is, this is a complex issue that you're wrestling with. So if you're, if you're confused and if you're, uh, you know, kind of toward a couple of different directions, it's, it's understandable. That's why I can say some, uh, that this is not against, uh, what you said or you, but that's not necessarily true. Um, the Farm Bill was passed. And within the Farm Bill, they don't technically call it marijuana, but it is legal. And it, um, yes, it is legal and it is legal in the state. So it's legal on all levels, as long as the THC, um, percentages are, are low enough.
THC eight, not nine, right.
But, uh, but marijuana is illegal. It's the tenth level, and you know, the, the THC level is, is monitored, but for marijuana, we're defining it in the state law, uh, that is allowing it for medical purposes, it is still illegal under the federal law. Okay, so with THC eight and THC nine, all of them, what, they're just fancy words. They just, uh, gave it a different name, and what it really is, is you have, so when you, when you get your marijuana, it has THC A in it.
Yeah, all of it does.
Right.
Right.
The only time it turns into THC is when it's exposed to too much sunlight or the burn. Then it becomes THC, the A drops off, THC, and then it becomes sideburn. So all marijuana is legal unless the THC level is so high. So that delta, eight delta fine is the same exact thing.
Well, but the marijuana is authorized by the state law for medical purposes.
Right.
At a certain level, that level is illegal under federal law, you say now.
No, so, but what I'm saying is, is you can go to a.
So that's why I'm saying there's still that discrepancy there, that the federal and the state.
Right, well, but. THC eight, THC nine, all different things, partly, you can go for a smoke trap and buy it. It is marijuana, it is, it is, it is the actual marijuana, the only difference is to keep it dark, so it's not enough to get to it. And as soon as you burn it, it becomes THC. You can ride around with that, and they sit there with certificates and all different type of things to verify. Other bonus, if you get pulled over, you got verification, it shows that it had a certain amount of THC, so it's technically legal as of the Farm Bill.
Yeah, you should do it at a car.
But that's just like alcohol, you can't drive around with a fifth of liquor, drive that, drive a car, but you can do it at home. I'm not saying that, but, yeah. That's the difference, so technically it is legal, you just call it a different name, it's a different way of handling it.
Well, be careful about that.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna endorse that view as a solicitor, as a man of law.
Yeah, and, and our ordinance, our ordinance does outlaw smoking.
Right.
Yeah, so, so it does address that. So if they do have whatever substance, and then, you know, it's not active, and they take it out in public and they activate it, yes, now, now they are still in violation of all of this.
Okay. Okay, this is for. If somebody is pulled over and we find pot and stuff on them at that point in time, are they still citing for, even though we've made it in the wind? Are you still citing them? Are they still getting fined for using while they're driving?
We are going to continue. I, I, I guess to summarize it, a couple months later, we're going to continue arresting them for possession of a small amount of marijuana. If you pass this law, if you do, if you don't, my heartbeat remains the same. I'm not adversarial with the board with whatever you do. Um. Is there a time and place, is there a scenario where we would potentially go, yeah, it just doesn't make sense to arrest this person? You give them a ticket, sure. Don't take a common process, but, you know, you're dealing with humans, so there has to be an exception to every rule. So if you pass it, hey, it, you know, well summarized, it's a tool in the tool shed, and you may use it, and, uh, but.
Here's an example.
Basic policy is we're going to do it around.
Here's an example for you, so let's say you have a nut and marijuana. They still, they, they have the right to use it, right? But if they smoke it in our park, in our park, this ordinance, we still give them the fee. Even though they're legally allowed to have it, our ordinance says you can't use it in public. So, their medical coverage doesn't cover that many.
I'm gonna use Sandy as a, just as a question. Uh, and excuse me if I say something that you haven't already told everybody. Sandy's dealing with cancer. So Sandy, let's say Sandy hasn't been approved to get medical marijuana, but she knows that it really relieves all the symptoms of her female. So she goes down to the local guy, and she buys a nickel bet, or whatever she bought, one joint. So she's got her one joint because she's sick of her stomach, and this really, really helps. On the way home, she gets pulled over, because her tail lights out maybe, and the officer sees that joint. You fill in the rest, or if you choose, you fill in the rest.
You know.
Or Sandy can fill in the rest.
And Sandy's gonna make a comment, first of all, Sandy is highly allergic to marijuana. I can sit on my back porch and I can get contact high from people on this side, people on this side, and people across the street. Okay, so Sandy ain't never been smoking pot. I ended up in the emergency room once because I ate half of a cookie.
It was just hypothetical, Sandy.
I have that, but my concern is, you're saying no public, right? I have neighbors, like I said, I can sit on my porch, right, or back, and I can get the contact high from them, so. That's out in public, they're not in their house, they're sitting in their backyard, they're sitting on their front porch, or they're going at the third floor window. So, hey, you know, what do you do?
So, so if they have a medical license, they can be on their property.
Okay.
To use it. But, but the ordinance is in public, in, like, out on the street, in the park, my big concern is park. Like, I don't want anybody to go to any of the parks. You know, because I don't want it around the other children.
Jerry, to, to answer your question, way the ordinance is written, if that joint she has is thirty grand or less, she gets a fifty dollar fine.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, if, if that's how they choose.
If that's how we choose is to.
If they choose that's how, it's, it's, it's ultimately up to the officer.
So no matter what we do, it's all gonna go down to if.
It's still, it's still up to the officer.
Got it.
So it's, it's almost like a discriminatory, right, because we're gonna be able to choose.
Not me. You're, you're, oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying every police officer would do that fine.
What? Why don't you change the word discriminatory to officer discretion, I think that's more accurate.
That's how it's listed. Discretion.
But overall, when you look at it, yeah, it, it just leaves a lot of open space in it.
Well, and, and that's where, you know, the conflicting programs, you know, if somebody's got, if somebody's got medical, they've got a car, and they have the right to have it. But that doesn't mean they have the right to use it over our park, doesn't mean they have the right to use it in Church Park a lot.
It's a DUI, because they own medical marijuana, not church, so.
Yeah, right, it's, yeah, we're just talking about possession and, and using in public.
Right, so I'm talking about possession of.
Yep.
And I don't think, if you have so long interaction with young people, or if you want medical marijuana, I would want to get them off the press.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, you can use this, even if they have a medical card, even if they have a right. To have it, this ordinance will still, you know, find them guilty of using in public. We're not saying they're not allowed to have it, we're saying they can't use it in public. I'm sorry.
Okay, again, marijuana in this area is being raised. And I hate to see one of our people in our borough end up dying because of having raised fentanyl. At that point, it's on each of the council members' back. You know, for that death. Uh, I'm sorry, but if you approved it, yeah.
We're not legalizing anything.
You're saying it's okay.
We're still getting fined, this ordinance says we're getting fined.
Well, you do, but.
We're not saying, hey, it's illegal in all right to do it.
Okay, now, if I walk outside with a gun.
Okay.
Okay, and I fire that gun off. That was my choice to go and fire that gun off. Okay, but if I'm caught with it, I'm going to go to jail for shooting law. Same difference, you're caught with something illegal, you pay the.
Discharging a firearm is not the same as to be marijuana, I, I, I had to.
But, anyway, I'll just say that we're not saying.
We're not saying. I'm trying to turn my eyes there, oh, it's okay. Just not, well, if they're operating motor vehicle, and they're under the influence of marijuana, maybe not.
That's a.
That's public drunkenness. That's not a.
Are you, are you sure they weren't on a bike?
There's public intoxication too. And public drunkenness, yeah, this is.
I was saying, we could be public intoxicants.
Um, I'm absolutely, the gentleman, sorry.
Yes. It's fine, you can call me Greg.
That's my father called me. Um, my question with, with you.
Mm-hmm.
Is if a patient had, or a person, I'm not a patient, so. A person has a medical marijuana card, and the marijuana is in the car with them. How's that work?
They just head on, it, it's legal, they head on them, it'd be like having a gun with a carry permit, loaded in the car, no problem, yeah.
And the difference is, the medical marijuana is pure pipe. Oh, and it's legal, they got their legal card, in a way, it's pure, that's why.
But, but either medical patients don't have an exemption if they're, if they're doing it in public.
And, I, you know, I, I see the argument, like, well, some marijuana relates, well, your bourbon, the cobbler's, it's a land, I mean, anything's possible. You have to bicycle off Facebook Marketplace to have that marijuana, I mean, with that argument, it's a slippery slope, argument.
There is, I worked at a field where I actually had people tell me, because that is how we got people who have long-term drugs. It's a late marijuana, but they don't have stronger drugs. So I wanted to get into that topic, because that there was directly to the age, where somebody could steal drugs. Because I was, I was.
One good fact is, there's no scientific proof of that, so.
There's a lot of people out there who do it that way.
Right.
Motion, they were.
Okay, um.
Great. Motion to, if, if, you have to approve or deny, or.
A motion.
Well.
How, how should your motion read, is to veto?
So you, you would say to override veto, a copy of.
Okay.
That would be a motion.
That, that's the other one, oh, that's not much of one, that's why.
But then, but then, you can, you can make it, you can make that motion and still vote yes. What, what, what you're doing is, you're trying to find out who wants, who supports it, whatever. If we do a number negative vote, everybody's gonna get confused.
Yeah, it was hard to kill.
Motion to override veto.
Approve the. For a.
That's why Tracy, do we have a set? I, second fight, not from that set, and we should do a roll call.
That should be a roll call, yeah.
Sonya, whenever you're ready.
Seth, I think.
Uh, yes.
Joel. Vivian.
How are you here?
Uh, we're taking a roll call vote on, uh, to override the veto and enact the ordinance.
No.
Tony.
From who's as an elected official representing the constituency, I say yes, override.
Tracy?
No.
Ricky?
No.
Yes.
Very good.
Motion fails.
No, I don't think so, no, it is four to three, right?
Yes, four to three.
And in order to override the veto, it's a veto, it's a majority plus.
Oh, so you need box.
So it's, well, yeah, failed, so it failed. So that, yeah, the motion.
Oh, I thought it said passed.
No, no, yeah, the, the motion to override veto. Has failed, right. Very good.
Okay, say that again.
The, the motion to override the veto and enact the ordinance.
Failed.
Failed. Right. Three to eight to four, three to four.
Okay, three heads, four yeses.
No, they, 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 three to eights.
No, no, sorry, correct. Three to eight, four to four heads.
Great. Um.
We can move on to.
Uh, and here's a question. Uh, I say none, so.
Engineer has nothing.
Remember, it passes. This group, ready for the turn of the roll.
Uh, Spencer, Liquid Fuels, the month of March, we'll see there is fifteen thousand nine fifty and one three eight eight oh one. The Lancaster truck bodies check was written originally in August. Um, it did not get processed by the Lancaster truck body, so I had to void this check and, uh, issue another one. So the original check was actually written in August, so I voided that, and then they lost the check, they didn't know, they didn't know where it was. They eventually did find it, in glove box of the truck. Uh, sewer total eighty two thousand one hundred ten dollars and seventy cents, majority of that money there, as you can see, was for consuming marijuana. Payroll total thirty two thousand three hundred eighty four dollars and two cents, uh, you can see the breakout there up above. And then there's also down below what we paid as an employer. And then the general fund total two thou- two hundred one thousand three hundred fifty nine dollars and thirty cents. Majority of that went to for the regional police, hundred thirty three thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and forty five cents, we pay that every quarter. So this was paid for the April, May, June quarter. Is there any question about anything else there? Okay.
Uh, we're, uh, listening to a separate voice. A motion. Thank you, good.
My question's on the general fund.
Who's the second?
Uh, it was Don.
Thank you, Don.
Uh, do it ahead of me.
Yeah, I just, um, the lawn financial board.
Yes, that's credit card.
You got the one that's two thousand one hundred twelve thousand?
Yes, it is. That's our Visa credit card.
I can't even achieve that.
The Visa credit card.
Oh, okay, well, what, can I also obtain that?
Well, some of it was public works, some of it was rec. Um, it's a multitude, it's a multitude of things, it's not just one particular thing.
I'm assuming the bulk of that was rec.
Yeah.
We had a Easter event.
And have you guys purchased lawn chair, are you gonna get lawn chairs here by the way?
No, we've got, we've got like a twenty foot pile of mulch.
Yeah, we had a mountain of mulch at the park, I literally had a mountain of it, so.
And it's legal stuff, I mean, it's not the worst of people.
Yeah, no, that was part of the park project, that we all just left it, and they, they left it, yeah.
No, it wasn't all rec.
Was it all rec, no, it was, it's split between rec and public works, I think the Easter event was like fifteen hundred dollars. Yeah, they had a bunch of eighteen.
How many, we had forty five kids, and we always buy some extras, and we have, you know, fifty Easter, Easter bags.
And, and just to, just to, I know where she's going, uh, stocking leader was the, uh, land deal. So that, that includes cost of the land deal, right, the forty three thousand, most of that is the land deal. That, because we had to pay for the land.
Thank you.
The one that was put on the credit card for recreation, we have a recreation fund, correct?
We do.
That would come out of that and pay that back off.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I'd have to go back and pull the bill to see what it was called. She's saying it comes out of rec fund, like, when I get a bill for lawn financial, I take it, and I say, if this is rec, then that comes out of rec fund. If this is general fund, then it comes out of general fund.
She's just asking if you'll go back and make that money.
No, I'll have to go and see what this is, whether it's two thousand twelve.
Basically, it's a general draw that, that would transfer funds.
No, what I'm saying is, that isn't rec.
That, that two thousand is not, right?
Yes, I have to go find out what that is, like, I could ask, send it out to everybody.
If you. Yeah, please, thank you. Did you give that to me? She has to go back and fill the check, she's gonna need.
I need someone that's public works, because I've been getting bills from them with Visa.
So here's what you gotta remember. Here's what you gotta remember, is, because I talked to the auditor about this last month, the rec fund is part of the general fund. It's just a subaccount. Okay, so that's why you don't get a report that says rec fund, you get liquid fuels, which by law, we have to keep separate. You have sewer, which by law, we have to keep separate, and then all the other funds are subaccounts of the general fund.
Yeah.
We do, we have, we have it on the books as separate, as separate revenue, so that each year, it doesn't get rolled out. So those are separate funds, but then they are reconciled, they are all reconciled under general fund.
But I will do like I did the other month.
And, and, and the auditor and I discussed that, and that's, that's appropriate.
I'll see if these turn out.
She's gonna, yeah.
Somebody's all about it. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Just, 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 uh, just an overview, what exactly will we hit with the, that counted out?
Uh, anything like line of paints for the roads, signs.
They get some.
General, general equipment.
Uh, we'll have to hear, I know they get some stuff like that there, paint.
I just know.
We get some stuff from D camel too.
Yeah, that's where you.
Yeah, that's where we get all the, so when you get an employee, that's, they get their protective pins, and they're, they're best, and stuff like that. They're yellow, they're yellow, whatever they are.
Behind us.
Do you want me to check out too?
No, 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 I just, I just know, they're a lot of, so, they're, they're in charge of, they're in tax, or stuff, you know, that's all, I'm curious.
He's saying the camel upcharges the stuff we buy from them, you know, because they don't produce that stuff themselves. So, I've, in the past, I've given them one line of materials, or stuff, through, they, you know, they like to be able to go to the camel, buy it, have it in hand.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I, some of the purchases probably be made on Amazon, or, or.
Yeah, it's a long time, you can do us a.
I've heard of a lot of notable.
Yeah, we can look them up in the county, now. Do a lot of that stuff.
I think we used that for something, didn't we, I think I.
We did at some point.
Yeah, I, I remember the name.
Yeah, I, I know we have that stuff remembered for, I'll let, I'll let Tom know.
Yeah, just look into it.
Yeah, he's real on top of that, it, actually, Tom, it was one of his, his first week, he said to me, hey, you know, what are my budget? It, actually, Tom, it was one of his, his first week, he said to me, hey, you know, what are my budget restrictions? What am I about to do? So we sat down, like, he's actually tracking his budget. So, yeah, I'll I'll make mention to him, Joel, about that and and let him.
All right, yeah, I'll try.
I'm all about saving money.
Yeah, I'll try to do some of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm not opposed to that at all.
Yeah, David. All right, thank you. Um, we had a motion by Vicky to accept the reports and a second by Donnie, um. All there say I?
I have.
All votes. All right, so moved. And then uh uh Sonya needs a uh a motion to approve wrap-up bills uh through uh Nick. Fire away.
Steve?
So that is um, that is the amount the council agreed to um increase uh Tom Marshall because we still provide benefits. And that his other job, he might be, he got benefits, so.
Thank you. Here's. Uh, so um Tom Marshall got paid health benefits, pension, that kind of stuff at his previous job, so in moving to offer him those things here, we we increased his overall pay.
It's, it it comes to five thousand a year essentially. And that's money that he can take somewhere else and get a pay.
Well, and there was a privilege on.
And it was a privilege.
Being paid here.
Yeah, they, he shouldn't, maybe he wasn't at that meeting.
That's right.
So is that a lot of his hourly wage then?
That's included in his hourly wage, but we keep it separate because it's technically a benefit. So if he gets a pay increase next year, that doesn't count towards, that stays the same. The only line item that would increase is his, his rate, base rate of pay. Not, not including that.
You agreed that the site, whatever you should provide for uh benefits, but it's uh stipend, that stipend act goes away.
Five thousand dollars instead of taxes or?
Oh, yeah, it still goes, it still goes on his payroll, yes.
Where is that?
Yep.
What, what is the per hour?
It's three dollars.
I mean, uh, she wants, she'd ask more than basis.
Twenty four. Yeah, twenty four, and then the, and then.
Yeah, so twenty seven with the additional five thousand.
And I believe that's the.
Yeah.
All right, uh.
So see for plan.
It's thirty five dollars.
Um, motion by uh Vivian, I didn't hear a second of us. Tracy said. Tracy, okay, thank you.
No, you you made your motion.
Yeah, you made the motion. Um, so uh motion by Vivian and second by Tracy, all three of them say I?
I.
All votes? All right, so moved. Yeah, you guys. Okay, yes.
I have nothing else.
They're, they're just gonna. They're gonna remember that.
Oh, okay, well, I was just saying, I have nothing else.
Okay, okay.
I'll send it over there.
Not quite. We're gonna do that yet. We can wait for it, this is the report's wanted.
Yeah.
I'll let it.
Yeah, we, we, we have nothing else.
And the committee's in order.
We did.
And I cover all of it.
I have that written down, so. They come back with a new poll comment announcements and.
Two, one. Three to four.
Three.
Yes. Yes. Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's uh wood grain and then yeah. Part the name and the letters are white.
Vivian, if I, I'm trying to call phone number for someone, if I lose you, I'll call you back if you wanna do it.
All right.
Hold on a second.
When you said J E R O L B U.
Uh, J E R.
Why? A real one for me, J E R. Duncan doing. Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's his one, that's.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I'll be getting the others. I'll get you a new one. Uh, we'll have to get you a new one.
Uh, Vivian.
All of them have, yeah, all of them have.
We have.
Okay.
So it'll be a credit, J E, Duncan, add to what that US is.
Oh, that's great.
You can give all your girl some money.
Yes.
How do I check that?
You can give it.
Yeah, yeah, you can check right away.
Yeah. I'll check it from my.
Yes, yeah, you'll have to really walk in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
I don't have, I don't have.
I have something to think about.
I'll look, and I'll get your paperwork together, then you gotta use them to that too there. I'll get the paperwork. I'll let him know it's ready.
Okay. Probably have one of those rain sticks over there.
I don't know what it was.
Did you walk down?
Did you walk down?
Did I? No.
I was gonna say you. I'm good with that thing now.
I should walk more, but I didn't.
I should check. I'm probably just now.
I remember there was one time I had a flat tire and I walked here from my office. That's longer than I expected.
That ain't right over there, yeah.
That, that got my attention, so I'm not doing that again. You're like my wife.
The place I showed that is horrible snow, this is years ago. And I knew I had to be in a dehonest. So I put on the orange button suit so that they could see me. And I walked from our house into South New York Street.
Oh, my.
And I got in there and my boss walks in and says. He comes in a couple minutes later, he says, why did you get here? I said, I walked, he says, no, you did, and I said, go to the bathroom, all my stuff's back there. He says, I can't believe it. Five minutes later, he says, come on up, take you home. I was like, oh.
All right, um, so all the committees, organizations have been um, are done by Dave unless anybody else finds anything else under committee or organizations.
Just a question, are we having a work in recreation meeting next month?
Uh, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll re-promised it, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know when you'll be available.
Okay.
I doubt.
Yeah, I see, that's what I figured.
Um.
Yeah, Jerry's, Jerry's working once your stuff works.
Well, I've just got a couple of quick questions since the May eighteenth is coming up pretty quick.
Yes.
Is, is, do you envision that being an afternoon event, an evening event? Do you, do you want the entertainment to be a focal point of the day or just background music?
I think we planned for afternoon, the problem is when the is organized area, I think we. I think it was set for the afternoon.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Um, probably, probably more focal, I'd say.
Okay.
I mean, I think the stick in the bone.
Well, that's why we got hours.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
And so are the recreations are usually the one day after the council meeting, right? That's how.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask this, the, here again, I called several of my normal go-tos. Be- because the eighteenth is like, not even thirty days away, they're all, they're booked. I have a, a duo. A husband-wife duo.
Okay.
But the way he plays, he has a looper.
Oh, gotcha, okay, right.
So he, you know, they literally sound like five or six people even though it's.
No, I'm, I'm cool with that.
That's okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, yeah.
I mean, if you close your eyes, you'll square, there's a band.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I don't have.
Okay, well, that'll save a lot of money too.
Yeah. Lot around from her or.
Right, exactly. Okay.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that. Yeah, we can cover that. Yeah, if you're on one of them.
Oh, we just got an offer, we just got an offer. Mr. Tipton said he'll come and rap. If you wanna hear that. No, hold on.
I was gonna have you run it south.
Yeah, that's conflicting, I mean.
Okay, come just.
No, no, that, that, look, the, the, the dates for that are um, like, you know, the they, ways of.
Right.
They, they set those dates, that.
Okay.
You know.
Well, ju- just, so when you do your rec meeting, it's what I have lined up so far. I have a band for July fourth. I'm gonna go ahead and confirm the duo for May eighteenth. I'm planning on a DJ for Junie, uh, nine, Ju-teen, sorry. And also Latino Day, I'm gonna do a DJ. Because they can, they can cover it all. And then I don't know whether you wanna get a, a band or or some sort of an act for diversity day or or what, that's up to you.
When is Latino Day here?
September.
September fourteenth.
Yeah, yep.
Are we gonna have a newsletter on with all these that's on before?
Rox is working on the newsletter now with um, with the third garden.
Yeah, I don't think the newsletter will.
We're gonna have two per year. Is how this.
Yeah. Well, if you want, we can do.
Yeah, so once, once we get a final, if, if you guys approve.
Hold on, Dave, do, do you do the same?
If you guys approve that list of dates of your next meeting.
Yeah.
Then just get it to us and we'll post.
Okay.
Yeah, but right now, the list I have isn't in a form.
Yeah, okay, try and get my.
I have a list.
I have it in my.
Yeah, do you?
But it's, it's in the.
It's just not in a format that I can send that. But yeah, if you guys finalize that, shoot it over to us, we'll post.
It's for the one point fifth, the one point fifth. And then what's the band for? That's July fourth. And then DJ for the other two. And Latino for six.
Yeah, let us know about that vague key thing, about the conflict. Let us know if you decide to do that or not, please.
Yeah, and if any of that stuff that I'm proposing doesn't work for you, let me know.
Right, that, that sounds good to me, I mean, I, yeah, I think, do you have a good idea for those specific dates?
Yeah.
Well, yes, yes.
And then a band for July fourth.
Yep.
Yeah.
And then once, once you guys give me that finalized list, that's when I'll reach out to the different groups that we want to come and attend the different events and get them set up.
I had some.
So that it is educational, right?
I had someone in the shop today that wanted to know, are you gonna be offering or selling foods at the one twenty fifth? It's a lady running for political office.
Rivera?
Yes.
Uh, I talked to um.
The guy?
The guy's class, class. It's uh, um, I did talk to him for about an hour today.
That don't surprise me. He was in my place for a while.
Yeah, um, I did talk to him, I, I sent him an email on the pavilion and he wants, he wants to bring her along during the uh my next event.
Yeah, I said, I said one twenty.
But he wants, he wants to rent the pavilion.
He's back there.
And uh, he wants to rent the pavilion so she can have a campaign event there, and I said, yeah, why won't he?
Oh.
Yeah, he can pay the, it, he. Go that.
Oh, the, the only thing I said is that we can't.
I, I'm writing on her first name, Jas- Jasmine Rivera, she's uh running, running on the Republican page. Uh, she wants to have a, uh, according to somebody affiliated with her, that she wants to have a campaign event.
So, so why explain what?
No, I don't, no, they just, they just asked about a possible, and I said, yeah, you just rent the pavilion and I said, sure.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can't as a borough advocate any candidate.
Right.
For, for, for offices like that, so, but if it's a public event, they're, they're welcome to come and make.
Yeah.
That, I mean, anybody can do that. If they rent a pavilion, then, I mean, they can do what they want at the pavilion, it's not us giving them the space.
Right, yeah, we have to charge them.
We have to charge.
Right, and it's seventy five dollars for renting a pavilion for a day, so it's for campaign, I'd imagine the campaign would probably handle that, it's not that much.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Who are the, who are the personnel?
Uh, I believe it's me, Donnie, Tracy, I don't have the committee list in front of me, I think it's Tracy. Yeah, I think it's us three. I can double check for you after meeting, that I just don't have it.
We have a really bad day. I brought everything to council as a whole.
Right.
So.
Does she have anything else? Yes.
Are you talking about public comment?
Um, yeah, we could have a public comment.
Okay. Um, sometime back, there was a comment made in the meeting that once two regals. Yeah, was done that the rest of them would be done shortly thereafter, what is up with that, cause apparently that it's not.
It's in, it's in process.
In process for how long?
Well, it's, it's an opening matter, I don't mean that I can talk about it.
You can.
I don't know that you can.
Well, I don't think we wanna talk about how we're supposed to handle this sort of strategy.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody else from council, public comment? Seeing none, we have, go ahead.
Um. I'm like the university said, leaving, um, I've been asked by big pieces as far as new voting. On the uh employees pay. Uh, on different people, the albums and things. Um. Yes, I am. Um, I'm just voting for it. And I am being sure I always fought for people for pay. The reason, I don't feel like I should, I do, but I will. Reason why I voted for that public is because it's not that I didn't wanna see the guys get the money that they got. It's. North York is very small. And there's not that much space here. For guys to make more than guys in bigger cities. That was my opinion. Um, I think. I don't think that the, the, the raise is shit, it's high. Um. It's point zero three pounds or something like that, North York at the total. And you got some guys here making more than Harrisburg, New York City. And there's about eighty something mile of street just across here, it doesn't even approach here. That was my reasoning behind that. And I thought, oh, once you guys get paid, I just feel like it was a lot compared to what they actually, what they actually were responsible for. Um. I do wanna ask about the great girl situation, I don't know, I just can't speak about it. Thought it focused on.
Do you, you wanna, when we, um, when we adjourn, do you wanna go into a quick executives and talk about, I mean, it'll be about five minutes.
Yeah, we can do that.
So, so are you talking about home employees or?
Home.
So, so I will, I will just comment, Joel, um, and this is no disrespect to you, but that's why we look better than the city right now. Because we have good people.
I mean, I'm, I'm not knocking anybody here, I'll give you a long, but I can take three parts and sit in the side of this whole car. And then if they spot a guy, you're good, and it's high city, five minutes, and they don't even make the few guys. So, I hear what you're saying, but.
Do they get pensions? Do they get pensions? We, we've got to compete in someone.
Well, for sure, hour for hours.
Now, we will, we will end up competing in under budget on public works table by the end of the year.
Yeah, but I'll just say that that was my reason why, that's, that's a lot. I mean, Harrisburg, you know, there's, I don't know, there's, I'm just very, so.
We, we, we do also have our own public, our sewer, that we gotta take care of. We, we, we do also have our, our sewer that we got to take care of.
Yeah.
Well, I understand, but it's. We've only got three, three guys in a part-time work.
No, I'm just, I'm just.
That's, you know, the guys we do have, we've gotta have good people.
I just wanted to, uh, so hopefully that was a.
Tracy, you?
Um, I just wanted to, um, public comment say that, um, just saying anyway, it came out to the, um, camp cruise for camp over the weekend. It was, um, we had some time, um, it was orderly and, um, I think we need more rock parties like that to get everybody. You know, in the, in the community together, so, and they did an excellent job, um, organizing and everything was great.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, uh, I just wanted to say welcome to the area that has become the coach on this, is the home man's brought up the vacant support. I have to speak my truth because I've been trying to bring up the vacant support for two years when there was a vacancy. And I was like, shit, my head against the brick wall, because I knew it was a long way from the get-go. And we walked the entire house, I'm really so worried, and this is what we played for two months, like, went for it, so I got on the way out. Thank you for that. But anyway, we'll talk about that and there's always been a lot to say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And then I want, again, I know we all, you know, I'm not the one that's ever been, but I, I just feel like, believe. The people that you're just looking to young people because I have a lot of people thinking that this is making it, we're all more short. And I tried to, you know, go through it with that, but I did it for some people that we want, okay, and then we start enough to get it, so. Hard to mention. We hope we say, that's a fact.
Sure. All right, I'm all right. Anything else? All right, I do have an announcement, um, which, the first one conflicts with our, um, uh, borough of the eighteenth, but I'll, somehow, I'll make it, I'll make a vote for it. Um, we'll just run cleanup day in the borough, hosted by the lower, subsequent to Riverkeeper and Waze, Watershed Lions of New York. Um, they, they bring a, uh, they pay for the dumpster, they put the dumpster down at Comfort Keepers, stay in out waiters and bags. Uh, encourage the public to come out in the morning, help us clean up our, our creek. And, uh, uh, make a big difference in the borough. I, you know, we've been doing this, uh, partnering with them for the last couple of years and it. Creek looks really good afterwards, it was good for a month or so, and then, yeah, the waters, you know, if we get a flood in it, you know, it'll bad again, but we keep working at it.
Cover water, true, car door.
Cover toe, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Cover toe, my apologies. There is.
Thank you, by the way, thank you, Jeff, and, uh, I don't know, your fiance still helps do it, but you guys have been helping through the fifth year suspension for doing that. I just want to wish y'all, I can't think of what to do now, but any of the challenges we should really try and do, but actually, it's a fun day.
It is fun, it can be a lot of hard, it is hard work though, I will say that.
Yeah, it's hard work, but it's, it's, uh, worth tuning in.
But there are usually freebies afterwards, so, you know. Um, they, they are also doing a Hedoris Creek cleanup, it's canceled the last few years. Um, that's on the fourth of May, but they don't have any info of where, or when, or how, um, so I'm still following that. Um, the next regular council meeting is May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty right here, the, uh, council chambers, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, second one, I got Joel on that. All favors A.I.?
Aye.
All right, so move.
Okay, who's first or do the second? Do the second.
Dude, welcome Jerry. I forgot, can, can we still go to exec book, we didn't vote on one of them?
We need to take a test.
Well, do you want to? About. I mean, I, I don't mind, it's. Right, that, that's where you go. I'm, I'm just asking, I, I think they do want, um.
Okay.
But do we have, did we have to vote?
No, no, you can take the announce, except, uh, before the next meeting.
Okay.